Everybody could stand for the pledge of leissons, please. Good evening. We're all present, John?
Yes, sir. Everybody here.
Any additions or deletions on the agenda?
No, sir. None tonight.
Motion to approve and second to approve the agendas. All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Passed, all present. Review and approve minutes from February 13th.
The motion to approve?
Second.
We got a motion to approve and a second. All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Passed with all present. Well, there's a public hearing. The Way Park Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at City Hall, 19 13th Avenue North at 6:30 or soon after on Tuesday, March 12th. 24 to hear the following request. Request to... Request of WP Housing Group LLC for variance from Way Park City Ordinance, Section 52.37 Shoreland Overlay District, Subdivision 2B District Application. Sub 4.2B permitted use, Sub 9 Height Requirements, and from Way Park City Ordinance, Section 52.21 RM 24 Moderate High Density Multiple Family. Related to front yard setback. Property is legally described as Lot 1, Block 1, River Glen Edition, all in the city of Way Park, Stearns County, Minnesota. Vacant parcel at 2907 First Street South. Public hearing opened at 6:33.
Planning Commissioners, those in the audience, applicants, anyone at home. This request has been submitted by WP Housing Group LLC. Again, for variances, several variances from Way Park City Ordinance, Section 52.37 Shoreland Overlay District. Within those subdivision 2B District Application, subdivision 4 2B permitted uses, subdivision 9 height requirements, and from the Way Park City Ordinance, Section 52.21 RM 24 Moderate High Density Multiple Family Residential District, subdivision 5D1, which is connected with front yard setback. The requests have been made to accommodate a three-story multifamily development upon the vacant property on First Street South. Currently addressed is 2907 First Street South and immediately to the west of Woods Nursery. This area is zoned appropriately for high-density multifamily development. It was previously rezoned, plotted and approved for a larger 72-unit building in 2013. The plans or site plan for that structure is on screen at the moment for comparison and just to help get bearings. However, the project did not move forward at that time, obviously, after receiving city approvals. I would note that the approved 2013 configuration did not reference or consider the city's established Shoreland Overlay District, which applies to areas generally within 300 feet of the banks of the Sauk River and which is intended to ensure that uses within those areas are compatible with the goal of kind of maintaining riverfront areas as a natural resource and view shed. The 2013 approval was located largely within that established district. My belief is that the omission of consideration of the shoreline aspects was an oversight from previous city staff responsible for review at the time. As best as our records can tell, there was no variances or required notifications to other agencies that would have been required to accommodate the previous 2013 site plan as on screen. It's going to go up a bit to the existing proposal. Bring it on screen here a little bit for everybody. In working with the applicant over the past month, staff advised and confirmed that the subject property was zoned appropriately for a multifamily development. It did maintain that RM 24 classification even though the previously reviewed and approved project from 2013 didn't go ahead. Initial consideration was given to a configuration on the western side of the property, pretty much mirroring what you have on the screen here, but located with the bulk of the building closer to the edges of the Sauk River. However, during ongoing conversations with the applicant, staff identified the concerns regarding the designated Shoreland Overlay District, which led to the revised layout on screen here, designed to minimize the areas of the building located within the shoreline area as depicted on the applicant's submitted site plan. As you can see, it's faint on the screen here, but this green line that bisects the property is the extent of the shoreline. Everything from this line westward would be considered shoreline area per city ordinance. Given the configuration of the parcel and the application of the 300-foot shoreline designation from the contours of the Sauk River, it's not viable for the applicants to meet their requirements while entirely avoiding impacts to the established shoreline area. The proposed configuration is one of several that was reviewed and discussed between the applicants and city staff and was determined to be the preferable option as it balances a minimum of impacts within the shoreline area as well as maintaining a more open view across First Street South from existing residents to the southern side of the street. The proposed building would be 48 units. Again, in comparison to the previously originally considered 72-unit building. Three-story with units ranging from 1 to 4 bedrooms each. The overall density for the property is within the allowed standards of the underlying RM 24 district and is significantly less than the previously approved 72-unit project from 2013. For reference, the units would include in-unit washer and dryers, walk-in closets, full kitchen appliance layout, balcony, patio, and accessible design features. Some of the community features include a larger community room for gathering, onsite management, playground area for children, and outdoor space for families. For persons with disabilities, per the applicant, the apartments would include some units with accessible features, including roll-under sinks, transfer and roll-in showers, grab bars in the bathrooms, three-foot doorways throughout, open concept designs in the kitchen, and living injury fall prevention and many more. Those design concepts, per the applicant, came from feedback from local organizations that work with individuals with disabilities and elderly to find housing that meets their clients' specific needs. In addition, the building is proposed to be one of the first passive buildings designed within central Minnesota, which is a set of design principles for energy efficiency while also creating comfortable indoor living spaces. In reviewing the documentation from 2013, initially considered with the previous approvals, there was a provision for inclusion of a trail extension along First Street South to connect with the trail component along Woods Nursery and serve as part of a larger trail system connection as per the city's parks and trail system maps, which includes this property. Basically, the city, when opportunities arise, completes small sections of trails with the intent to eventually have a full trail connection throughout. The trail was included as part of the development agreement and surety by which the property owner was to complete the trail extension at their expense. As part of any approval of the variances, the city will seek provision of a six-foot wide trail along the southern frontage of property by the owner or property owner developer as part of the development agreement. As per city ordinance, variance approvals may be accompanied by conditions of approval. The first variance request from the Shoreland... Excuse me, Shoreland Overlay District. The district application would allow for the extensions of the portions of the building, as noted in the site plan, into the Shoreland Overlay District. That would be what you can consider these, the kind of wings of the building from this line westward and this line westward primarily. The second variance, as far as permitted uses, would allow for exemption approving the multifamily development within the Shoreland Overlay District, which otherwise allows for a maximum of fourplex units within the Shoreland Overlay District. That the Shoreland Overlay District standards don't align or correspond to the designated underlying RM 24 Moderate High Density Residential, which is intended for a much higher density use than the Shoreland Overlay District. Any realistic design for multifamily development as per the established or approved zoning would require variance to utilize some of the shoreline area. The applicants have designed their layout specifically to minimize impacts and reduce the need for variances to the largest degree possible. The third variance request from Way Park City Ordinance, Section 52.37 regarding height requirements, would allow for the construction of the three-story building within approved impact areas of the Shoreland Overlay District. The overlay district otherwise generally limits buildings to a maximum of 25-foot height. Given the distance between the river and the proposed buildings, per the site plan, impacts and view shed from the river would be minimized. The fourth variance is from city ordinance, Section 52.21, which is the actual underlying RM 24 Multifamily Residential District, the front yard setback. That would... The request is to reduce the front yard setback. That would be the side along First Street South from 40 feet to 20 feet. This is being made to accommodate the configuration of the building as proposed to minimize subsequent impacts on the shoreline area. Essentially, this variance is being requested to reduce needs for other variance and support the ideal location the building is configured. Notice of the requests have been made to surrounding residents and property owners. And as of time of writing of this report, Thursday, March 7th, no comments were received. Notification is also made to the Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources as per the Shoreland Ordinance requirements, as well as to our area, DNR area hydrologist as a courtesy. Thus far, no comments or feedback have been received. There's a 30-day window after final city council review and determination for the DNR commissioner to concur or deny the proposal. Or if no comments are received, within that window, the city council's determination stands. Staff believes the variance request to be justified and to constitute practical difficulties. The conditions of the property and the application of the Shoreland Ordinance as written, combined with the underlying zoning designation of the property, result in a property that is largely nonviable for its planned use if a strict interpretation of the ordinance is applied. Moreover, the previous approvals for a larger similar development in 2013 could likely have moved forward unencumbered by the impacts of the Shoreland Ordinance had the project progressed differently at that time. Given careful consideration of the request and the intent and aspects of the applicable ordinances as written and evaluation of the request against the requirements for variances as enclosed, staff recommends approval of all four variances with conditions as recommended by city staff. In staff's opinion, the request meets the requirements and threshold for establishment of practical difficulties. My recommendation, again, would be for approval of the variances as requested with added condition, tack to the first variance request that... Actually, two conditions. Number one, applicant developer shall provide for a six-foot wide trail connection upon entirety of southern frontage of property at their expense, subject to final design and approval and specifications as determined by city through the development agreement. And number two, the owner developer shall coordinate with city regarding development agreement, which shall be completed prior to issuance of building permits for the property.
And John, what about number three?
I did have number three. I apologize. The last item, it's not reflected in my packet, but it is in yours since it was previously updated. The last item pertains to the provision and maintenance of the playground area as proposed by the applicant. Basically, that it would be installed as proposed and reflected in building permit and then maintained as such and not removed without city permission. The reason for that is that there have been a number of multifamily developments in town that have... After some years of being up and going with no issues, they kind of take down their playground equipment and it's kind of an unfortunate situation for the residents with children there. So that would be my recommendations. We can open it up for discussion or comments whenever you're ready.
Commissioners have any questions? This is a public hearing. If anybody wants to speak yea or nay for it, they can come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and leave us know if you have any questions or concerns.
Kathy Gilletzer. Now, I don't live on First Street, but I represent like the 2922 First Street South. More just want to know how it's going to affect the houses. Is the road going to be widened? Are they moving sewer any further than it is? Or is it... Will it stay stubbed in? Because not all those houses have city water sewer. First Street. So does anyone know what's happening with that road?
I can't say for certain. I know that First Street South is an area that's under consideration at this time. I'm sorry, I don't have the specifics of how the road might be impacted. I don't believe there's any plans to widen it from what I understand.
Would there be a turn lane going into the apartment building?
I'm not sure at this point. I don't believe we've gotten that far into any part of the consideration. A lot of those specifics would be considered as part of the development agreement. Essentially, without knowing that the project would move forward, they haven't gotten that far into the design considerations. But I do know that First Street South is one that's been under consideration for improvements in the relative near term.
Do you know kind of what improvements? Just would they cut the road off?
I'm sorry, I don't know the specifics.
Any of that?
Not at this time.
Okay. I guess it's... I grew up there, and so that used to be full of water all the time. It's floodplain. The house is still floodplain. Surprised you're okaying it? I mean, water can come across that road. Are they building this up really high?
If it does move forward, it has to comply with the floodplain aspect, so it may need to be elevated a little bit. That's a separate facet, but the bulk of the property is actually outside the designated floodplain. But those are all engineering aspects that need to be addressed if it does go forward. So it wouldn't shock me if it did end up being elevated a little bit, to bring it up... Raise up a little bit.
Is there any other, you know, that's going to affect our houses over there? I mean, yeah, there's going to be noise. There's probably going to be, you know, a little more crime. I live by apartments. I understand, you know, that that all happens. But is there any other... It's going to affect our ability to sell our houses?
I can't say what it may or may not. I mean, anything we would say would be conjecture. It may have an impact. It may not. Those are all market values that are beyond the scope of what the city can control or plan for.
Okay. I mean, I can say, nobody really wants it, you know? They don't want to look out right now. I mean, they see a nice field, river. So I guess most of the neighbors would probably say we're not in favor of it, but...
Well, I would add that, you know, it is... The overlying concept of the project, it does have the zoning associated with it. So even if this project were to not move forward, if there was some sort of other apartment that could squeeze into the shoreline area or into that property without impacting the shoreline area, the city would not have any recourse to prevent or stop that. That could essentially be given a building permit in a pretty rapid time. It would be smaller than this, yes, but that is a possibility that's within the realm of possibility. It's perhaps not likely, but, you know, those aspects were handled when there was a precursor project in 2013 that just didn't go forward at that time. I don't know the history. I wasn't here. But that was a much larger building that was more centrally located. So that it did have that underlying zoning that was tacked to it at that time. So you... Even if this project didn't move forward, there could still be a potential for, you know, either a smaller apartment building or some potential future request to rezone to a commercial use or something. So there's no expectation that that property would be vacant forever.
Yeah. Is there a timeline on this? Is there a hope to start? I mean, it still has to go through a couple of other meetings, I assume?
If it receives a positive review tonight or a negative review, if there's a determination or recommendation tonight, it could go to the city council as early as next coming Monday. Assuming the project were reviewed favorably and ultimately approved by the city council. I don't want to speak for the applicants, but I think they'd be looking for, what is that, a 2020... Early 2025 construction? Yeah, best-case scenario, probably 2025 construction early.
Okay. Thank you.
Julie Reberg, and I live at 3016 Street South, Way Park, First Street South, Way Park. I have a lot of the same concerns as what Kathy just spoke about. However, I am a homeowner on that street. I'm concerned also about traffic, any developments that may be... May or may not be made to our road. Also, city water and sewer. We currently do not have city water and sewer. We have our own well, and we'd like to see that stay the same. What kind of apartment complex is this? Is this a Section 8? Are you able to answer that question?
It's not Section 8. Section 8 is kind of an antiquated term. I would rather let the applicant speak to that, but it is something that's oriented towards workforce housing, folks making kind of a median to slightly above median income for the area, people that are, you know, perhaps young adults getting into the workforce.
Okay. I also am the last house on the street, so I have concern about all the traffic going in and out of that road, in and out of the apartment complex. Therefore, that light would all be shining towards my windows of my home. So I do have concerns about that. What kind of lighting is going to be in that parking lot? Are we going to see a lot of...
I don't believe that at this stage in the design, we haven't gotten as far as specific lighting plans. You know, any project, assuming it were to go forward, have to follow city ordinance as far as lighting cutoff and minimizing impacts on neighboring properties. But this does not have a full building permit package at this time that demonstrates every location of every light and everything.
And I'm going to echo what Kathy said about water and water in our basements. And I hope you guys really think about that because I know the original proposed plan was that they were going to do underground garages. I see that that's not in this. But any one of the neighbors could attest that they get at least a foot of water in their basement at a time in their pump and sump pumps because the river rises that much. And then are we going to be notified of upcoming meetings and where the progression of this is at and what's taking place?
There's no statutory requirement to notify you. This is the public hearing for the... For this particular project. If this project is tabled tonight for any reason, you would receive another notice if it came back to the planning commissioner for another public hearing. Otherwise, there's no... There's no requirement for another public hearing notice or anything. It would go to the council, and the council reviews. There's not a public hearing affiliated with that. But the all the public... The public is invited to the city council meetings, even if there's not a public hearing component.
Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Dupree, 2904 First Street South. My house is straight across from Woods, and we've only been here about 13 months. And I will say that Julie talked about the flooding. We purchased our house on March 31st, and we were in the house two weeks. And I went downstairs, put clothes on to wash in the basement because that's where the wash and dryer was at. And I had a half a foot of water. And so truly, it does happen, and it just happened this previous year. But... And then again, my other concern is we already have a gas station right here on the side, so there's a lot of traffic right there. But relatively, the road is not in and out, in and out, in and out. But my husband worked at an apartment complex here in Way Park, and lots of traffic, lots of trash that he had to pick up every day. And you're talking about middle-class or not Section 8 anymore, but lower-income people that would be living there. You know, is it going to really make our house depreciate? And so we're hoping that it doesn't pass.
Megan Carver, Sand Development. We've been in Way Park for 28 years, a local business off of 10th Avenue. This is our proposed development. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. When we went into the site, we did not anticipate, you know, the Shoreland Overlay District. We've been looking around the city of St. ... Excuse me, city of Way Park for a while to find a site that we think would be a viable site for a long-term development. We hold our properties for a very long time. When we build them, we intend to keep them for lots of years and re-burn rate them. We just renovated several within the local area. Two years, three years ago, maybe, we opened Vista Apartments in St. Joseph, Minnesota, which is just down the road on County Road 75, although you can't get there with them as easy with the bridge being closed down. But our plan is to start construction. Hopefully, if this moves forward in early 2025, it would be about a 12-month construction. The project... Our proposed project did not account for any garages. We recognize the water table issue per requirements. We will withhold at least one inch of waterfall on our property, which is, you can see, the expanded pond area. And then also work really closely with our civil engineer to determine the height of the... Excuse me, the floor of our building to ensure that there won't be flooding issues. It does not sit... The building and most of the property do not sit within the FEMA floodplain area, so... Like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
I hear you say you weren't going to be building any garages?
There are no garages on this site. So the parking is at 120, which is the city-required parking.
You would have to come back and state your name and question. We need to try to get everything on audio for recording purposes.
For your other projects, have you had a history of trying to do the lighting? To the... They had a point about, hey, is the lighting going to impact their homes? Do you do anything with like the mitigation for birds and for light pollution so people can see the stars at night? Do you guys have a policy on that, on your other projects?
The ordinance will require that we don't have any light that off shields of our site. I'm guessing it's pretty standard in most cities. And so we will have shields on any light poles that are close to the property line. All of our lights are downcast lights. We, I'm guessing, with the city requirements, will have to submit or likely would have to submit our, you know, electrical plan, which would show the lighting plan and show the candle foots contained within our property.
Are these going to be income-subsidized apartments?
The project is workforce housing, so they would be income-based. We have onsite professional management that is located on property. We do full background checks, including income and rent verifications and criminal history before any applicant over the age of 18 can move into the building. And those are all verified by a third party, national third party. And those are all verified by a third party, national third party, and then our internal compliance team reviews to make sure that we're complying with all of our program requirements.
Got a question you want to ask?
So part of my concern is, is you're telling us that there's 120 parking spots. This is a 48-unit complex. And if you've got four bedrooms, chances are you're going to have two adults living in that comp, in that particular apartment. So even if you do general math, 50 plus 50 is already 100. How many people are going to be able to go in that apartment and visit people in those apartments? You're not going to have adequate parking. And I hate to tell you, but that little pond is not going to hold the water. If you've got water coming across the road to us on the other side of the street, I don't think that little pond's going to help you. What was the other thing? I forgot what you had talked about. Oh, I was going to talk about crime in our neighborhood and how that all used to work. We've been at our residence now for 25 years. Down at the local DMV, they used to do drug testing and so forth down there. I can't yet tell you how many multiple, multiple times we had people running through our yard, running down the street, police in our neighborhood, trying to protect us because of what was going on at the DMV. And you're telling me, you just spoke about what kind of people are going to be living in this complex? That concerns me. And that will definitely, in my opinion, make the value of our homes go way down. Thank you.
Is, to respond to the parking issue at least, that the parking is based on the city standards, so there's, it meets their criteria, so there's no request for variance from that.
So with regards to the parking, most of our communities park two-to-one parking stalls. So that would require 96 stalls here. And we see that as more than adequate. But to not request an additional variance, we've met the 120 parking stalls that is required per city code. We have properties all over the Twin Cities, central Minnesota. And I don't, to my knowledge, any of our buildings that park two-to-one, meaning two parking stalls to every unit, do not have any parking concerns. With regards to the crime, I would just like to really challenge you to think that someone's income shouldn't define how you believe, whether you believe they are capable of crime or not. And I want, I mean, that's a really big burden that we have to overcome when we come before planning commissions and city councils, that oftentimes individuals associate your income level with a criminal level, and that's not the truth. And it's unfortunate. We believe this building will have a very high demand. We filled Vista Apartments, I think, in 60 to 90 days, full occupancy. And we anticipate that will be the same. There's huge demand in central Minnesota, and particularly Wake Park and surrounding areas for all of the bedroom sizes. We have a handful of four bedrooms here to accommodate larger families, because there is a very large demand throughout all of Minnesota for large family housing that is affordable, that individuals that are working can afford to live in the areas where they work, where their kids go to school, et cetera. So would appreciate your support tonight, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Very well. I believe making the reference to crime, at least based on income or property values being declining is all conjecture. There's no reason why that area couldn't be done very well and look very nice and attract a decent population. But I think it's really discriminatory to be talking about crime related to income. I don't think that's appropriate at all.
Is there any other, I just don't want to walk away if you have any other questions.
Go something you wanted to ask or?
Please, ma'am, could you come back to the mic? Thank you.
Rebecca Dupree again. I just want to say, so if they're having a lot of parties and stuff, or, you know, like you have family get-togethers and stuff on the weekend, if they're, everybody's home, it's a weekend, maybe holiday, are they going to park in our yards? Because I don't have a ditch, so you can just roll from the street right into my front yard. I know, but have you lived at them?
I, I live right next to a park.
Okay, well, let's hope that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Else like to make a comment or?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. We've got a motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passed with all present. Public hearing closed at 7:05. John, we have to do each one of these origins separately?
Yes, I'd recommend each one separately, because it is, it is possible. Probably not ideal for the applicant, but it is possible that, you know, they can be approved altogether, or one, or all, or none, or some combination thereof.
Well, in that case, I'll make a motion.
Question for John. With regard to the first variance, if this was indeed an oversight on the first go-around of this plan, my understanding is the notes or his presentation you gave originally, the DNR could object to this even after city council approval?
That's correct. The DNR does have the ability. When, the process is, when we receive the application, we provide a notice to the commissioner of the DNR, which starts a, a review process for them. Ultimately, once it goes to the city council, they have to be informed again of whatever the, the decision of the city council is. And then from that point, they have a 30-day window to either say, yep, we approve, we concur, or we deny. Or in probably the most likely scenario, nothing happens within that 30 days. And then the city council's determination is upheld. And I did provide a comment or a courtesy copy of this. It's not required by, by, by our ordinance, but I did provide a courtesy copy to our local area hydrologist who handles more of our local stuff. Reached out several times regarding this project in the early stages and just haven't got a lot of feedback, so, so be it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I would like to move, to recommend to the city council to approve the variance request from city ordinance, section 52.37 subdivision 2B district application to reduce the application of Shoreland District from 300 feet to approximately 220 in areas as proposed by applicant and depicted in accompanying site plan with conditions as listed below. Applicant developer shall provide this for six-foot-wide trail connection on entirety of southern frontage of property at their expense, subject to final design approval and specifications as determined by the city through development agreement. Secondly, owner-developers shall coordinate with city regarding development agreement, which shall be completed prior to issuance of building permits for property. And thirdly, the provision for establishing and maintaining a playground area for children at that development.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. No, no further discussion on my part. Thank you.
All in favor, sing by saying aye to approve?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passed with all present.
I would move to recommend to the city council to approve the variance request from city ordinance, section 52.37, subdivision 4.2B permitted uses to vary from limitation to maximum fourplex residential destiny within Shoreline Overland District.
Discussion?
The only discussion was, I was part of the group back in 2013, that moved this forward to the city council.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think there's any ill intent. I think it was just, just an oversight. And I didn't catch it until later in the review process either, so none of us are immune from that sort of stuff.
Oh.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, sing by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passed with all present.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for the approval of the third variance from section 5237 with regard to the height requirements of the building to allow for the, the third floor of the building.
I'll second. I sec, I'll second.
Any further discussion? No, not for me. Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, sing by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passed with all present.
I would like to move to recommend to the city council to approve the variance request from city ordinance, section 52.21, RM 24 moderate-high-density multiple-family residential district, subdivision 5B1, to reduce front yard setback from 40 feet to 20 feet in an RM 24 moderate-high-density residential district.
Second. We got a first and a second. Any further discussion? Motion for approval. All in favor, sing by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passed with all present. Get for this one for the city council?
We expect that this item could potentially go to the city council for the next meeting this coming Monday, March 18th, potentially. But keep an ear to the city council agendas and see if it does make it on there. Sometimes, depending on conversation at the city, or, excuse me, at the planning commission, we may opt to delay that to the next meeting to have, be sure everything reflects the, the conversation at the city, at the planning commission. But if at all possible, we'll try to move it probably for this upcoming city council meeting this next Monday, 6:30 PM at this location.
Thanks for coming.
Agenda item number six, notice of public hearing. Wake Park will hold a public hearing, City Hall, 1913th Avenue North at 6:30 soon after Thursday, Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. Hear the following requests of Crossroads Lofts and Shops LLC for amendment to plan unit development to allow removal of existing home and replace it with a twin home. And garages upon the property legally described as Lot 1, Block 1, Crossroads Lofts and Shops, 24. Address, 316 Second Avenue North, 205 Third Street. City of Wake Park, Stearns County, Minnesota. Public hearing opened at 7:14.
Planning commissioners, this request has been submitted by Crossroads Lofts and Shops LLC. You've had some, or at least some of you as the planning commission membership has evolved a little bit over the last few years. Crossroad Lofts and Shops LLC has previously developed that property in 2019. The southern portion, as you see on screen here, with the multi-use building as part of a mixed-use residential-commercial planning and development. That was considered at that time due to the requested reduction in setbacks and parking requirements needed to support the development, which we considered at the time as somewhat of a trial for small-scale redevelopment. The request before you at this time is to allow for removal of the existing single-family home at, immediately to the north at 316 Second Avenue Northeast and construction of a single-story duplex or twin home on the property, as well as garages on the eastern side, which may be utilized by the existing apartment units on the, with the existing building. We did previously amend the planning and development in 2022 to allow the ground floor to be utilized as residential. Although since that was approved, the ground floor has ultimately been leased and utilized largely for commercial space as originally intended. The approved amendment from 2022 allowed for, but did not require the ground floor to be used as residential. The applicant, since undertaking the project in 2019, later acquired the, the single-family property at 316 Second Avenue Northeast. The applicant proposes to remove the existing home and replace it with the single-story twin home duplex. I'll scroll down a little bit to, excuse me, wrong, wrong screen here. Get to the floor plan. Scale this down a little bit, get it on screen for you. Here you can see kind of the, the configuration of the site plan with the existing building along Third Street and then the proposed duplex with the six garage stalls on the, on the eastern side. The applicant, since undertaking the project in 2019, did acquire that property with no intent at that time to use it, but has now settled on the concept of the single-story twin home duplex with the addition of the garages that can be used in addition to or in lieu of existing off-street parking stalls for the, the existing building. I haven't received any complaints nor observed any issues related to parking for the property since it's been constructed, but there may be some tenants in that, that structure that might desire a, a garage stall as opposed to surface parking. The property is currently zoned B1, single, or, excuse me, limited commercial district, which currently allows for single-family dwellings. The consideration of the project as a planning and development allows for variation from the underlying district standards and could, with approval, allow for the replacement of the existing property with a twin home, as well as the garages, if those are approved as well. I'll scroll up a little bit and see the, kind of the conceptual elevations here. Not, not unlike or within several other areas in town. Staff does not believe that the replacement of the existing single-family home with a twin home would create concerns nor be out of line with the general conditions of the area. The subject area is a blend of commercial and residential uses. And it's generally considered good planning practice to have moderate-density housing options like twin homes or row homes as kind of a in-between area between higher density or higher count multifamily units and single-family properties, if at all possible, rather than a, a hard break between them. I would add that further establishment of twin homes or duplexes in other B1 limited commercial districts would not be allowed in other areas, as it's not an ordinance standard, at least not at this time. The only way this project can be considered at, at all is through part of the planned unit development, which this property has. The, I would add that these, the designs that you have before you are preliminary and if approved, the final designs could vary somewhat from what is being presented at the time, although I would require significant changes. Although I would require significant changes at my discretion to come back for further review, further review and consideration by the, the planning commission. And generally, I would expect that if approved, what you would see on, on the screen here is kind of a conceptual idea would be largely what would end up being built. Staff is supportive of the request and recommends approval with conditions as I will note here. Number one, design and configuration of proposed twin home duplex and garages shall follow documents as reviewed, approved by the planning commission and city council. Minor amendments may be approved by planning and community development director. Changes or amendments deemed as major shall require additional review approval by planning commission and city council. Number two, properties required to be platted prior to issuance of any building permits. Owners advise that sale of, sale of separate units may require separating the parcels and potential need for variance to reduce lot sizes. Lastly, number three, if rented, property shall obtain and maintain rental license for rental of, of units. Occupancy is subject to all city ordinances. Those be my recommendations. We can open for comment and discussion.
John, I do have a question. Are they putting it all into one lot now?
I can't say for certain at this point. It could be reconfigured all as one parcel. There's nothing that would really stop it. It's, it's two parcels currently. We did roll in the northern parcel with the previous amendment in twenty-twenty-two because the, the owner had purchased it at that time, so it is part of the existing, it's within bounds of the existing planning development. It, it would, it would pretty much depend more so on whether the applicant would intend to, to sell the houses individually or how they would want to configure that. I, I can let him speak to that a little more, but keeping them on, on the parcel and, and renting them is pretty straightforward, but there may be some more kind of mechanics involved if there was a, you know, if they were to be split and sold. So that's something that we'd have to account for.
I just know we had a question on dumpster and they ended up putting it on the other lot. I asked that time if they could get tight ends. There's always a dumpster spot.
Yeah, that, that was the intent at the, at the time, and we've since kind of, we've, we've pretty much resolved the dumpster issue. We did get it out of the right-of-way and got that enclosure around it. It could, it could be, there's, there's no reason why it couldn't be put somewhere else on, on either or both of the properties, as long as it's, as long as it's not in the right-of-way and accessible for the, who needs to pick it up.
Any questions on far as green space? Because I know the, the first building section for the lofts, it's pretty much one hundred percent non-pervious. It's all runoff. There's nothing that stays on the property. Nothing. Even the boulevard along Second Avenue is blacktopped. I mean, there is no place for any water to soak in anywhere.
But, I mean, there would still be some green space with, with the, with the proposal as, as they're depicting. But the, the reality is, is that the majority of, of properties in this area are very, very high with their, with their impervious calculations.
Commercial ones, and I know we talked about the apartment buildings. I mean, it was from a long time ago, but I know any new construction, we've been pushing it everywhere to have green spaces and control water and.
I mean, that, that's, it's somewhat of a balance. I mean, that, I know that the planning commission indicated previously a desire to have more parking on, on the properties. That was a comment that came up several times, even though the parking hasn't really posed an issue at all. You know, then if you want to provide additional parking for, for guests or visitors, then that comes at the expense of, of a green space. It, it's all a balance.
The next person that comes in and wants a variance, are we going to allow them to have no green space also?
That's, that's at the discretion of the planning commission and the city council. This is a, this is a planning development, so it does allow for, for those variations.
Are we, are we assured that there will be, will be six apartment, I mean, six garage units? Or can that number vary?
I would say that in, in my opinion, it would, it would stay at six or less. I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have an issue if it were less, but I would, I would not go more without bringing it back, but I don't realistically think there's room for probably.
Will there be any parking accommodations in addition to that for the twin homes?
The twin homes both have garages.
They will have their own?
Yep.
Thought I saw them on there, but I just wanted to verify.
Both have two-car. State your name and.
Jim Raxani with the Crossroad Lofts and Shops. Yes, they're, both twin homes will have their own two-stall garages. The twin homes are approximately thousand and a change, one thousand fifty square foot each.
Pick up a little bit, please.
Each twin homes would be one thousand twenty-five square foot, two bedrooms plus den, and a double garage each. That, that drawing is basically going to be pretty close to what was actual structure going to be.
How close to the street or is this building going to be?
Pardon me?
How close to the street is this building going to be in both, both streets that it's going to bound?
Is within the city required setback. Whatever that is.
For the town, the twin homes, they have to park in the garage? They won't be able to park in the driveway?
No, no, sir. Those, the two double garage would belong to each unit. Those six installed garages will be used by the apartment, existing apartments.
So there won't be a setback on that building from Second Avenue Northeast? There won't be a setback?
There will be setback in both side.
So they could park a car outside if they wanted to?
I was, on, on driveway, yes.
On the driveway?
On the driveway. But that's again, but in the city required setback.
The access for the garages then will be off Third and a Half Street, Northeast?
Pardon me?
The access to the garages from the, the six garages will be off Third and a Half Street?
Correct.
Behind the twin homes?
That is correct. If anything, it'd be a, it'd be a improvement in that corner. It's the way it is right now. There's no, no, nothing but positive to change that corner.
If all setback requirements are met and so on and so forth, the project looks like, looks like to me like it could work.
The existing building's five feet from the property line? So you're looking at from the property line to the garage doors, maybe fourteen feet? Most cars are longer than that. They'd be sitting out in the right-of-way.
Pardon me? What's the question?
I was just saying the existing building is five feet from the property line. I remember it's a five-foot setback.
Correct.
And if you take that line across, and you have nineteen foot, ten inches or whatever, but if you take that distance off, you're probably looking at fourteen, fourteen feet from the garage door to the property line?
That would be twenty feet.
Yeah, the aspect of here.
Eighty feet is to the road.
To the road.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the concern is, Jim, with this, is that the layout you have here, just, it's, it's too close to the road to allow someone to park in the, in the driveway and not be in the right-of-way. So that could, that could either be resolved by, you know, we could, we could work with you and, and relocate the house a little further back and meet the standard, the standard setback, or, or if it's approved in this configuration, you just, you, you can't park anywhere, anything in the right-of-way.
Yeah, no parking would be in the right-of-way. So if you have to set the house back, but to my understanding, the drawing right now allow for the setback, for the twenty-feet setback.
It goes out to the.
To the road.
Right, but there's city right-of-way in there.
So.
Because the building, existing building's five feet from the line, and that, you have a line going all the way down, and that twenty feet goes past it. Nineteen feet, ten inches goes past your property line. So it's not twenty feet from the garages to the right-of-way.
Perhaps fifteen feet.
Scale to the drawing at all.
Back farther?
No.
Good at driving the garages.
Well, you've got twenty-four feet. Greater than twenty-four feet to the garages. Like using the same app that you're using, that drive is over twenty-four, it's twenty-four feet.
The, the question is whether it's a concern among the planning commission or ultimately the city council, whether the, the car overhangs or a vehicle parked in the driveway overhangs into what is technically city right-of-way?
Right here it says twenty-four feet.
Or whether it ultimately enters the actual roadway.
Twenty-four feet?
Here, just for comparison, planning commissioners, I want you to see this. Now, this isn't uncommon with right-of-way aspects right across the street. Those vehicles are technically in the right-of-way. It, it happens, and these, you go up a little further, there's some technically in the right-of-way, technically in the right-of-way. It's, you know, is it, is it ideal? No, but I mean, is, is it, it's, it's up to you whether it's a concern, whether they are in, in what is technically city right-of-way, as long as they're not overhanging into the traffic lane? I mean, if you want to condition, if you want to move an approval but conditioned on that they can't park in the driveway, can only be in the garage, that's, that's up to you. But I mean, realistically, no vehicle's going to be parked in a driveway for long if it's overhanging into the street. I mean, someone will get after that.
There is nineteen feet, ten inches from the front garage to the street, to the curb.
To the street, not to the right-of-way.
Unless it's a long box pickup.
Well, to me, that's a city council issue.
Close to the garage, the house, everything. Do you think there's enough water control?
That area back there has always had a problem with water control.
Runoff to put more in the road?
This is an opportunity to improve the area as well. And I think trying to set a, a different set of standards from what's already out there is kind of pushing it too. Now, you got cars parked all over back out there in that area. We've always had an issue with water drainage back in that whole area. It's always been an issue back there.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second that.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor saying with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearing closed at seven thirty-four.
I make a motion to recommend that the city council to approve the amendment to plan the unit development as submitted or with modifications that, modifications that the city council may come forward with.
I'll second that.
I know it's hurting that we're leaving, we're leaving stuff build-out too much where we can't control water with no green space, you know, parking. I mean, you look at the initial building, it's a hundred percent, and it's five feet from everything. I mean, it's a hundred percent build-out. I don't think that's what we want in the city, no matter, you know, we're going to create more problems with water with more runoff.
I, I understand your concern, Tim, I think, but as, as we, as you drive back there and you look back there, you're putting conditions in this, in this particular instance that aren't being followed in the rest of the development. And to me, with all of the issues we've had back there and including the drainage ditch and everything for water, I think the conditions are just a little bit onerous at this point in time for this building. We've already approved the building. We already approved the parking up in front. Now we're making some different conditions available. What, what we're going to gain here is an improvement in that whole area. It's pretty run down and shabby.
Well, it's actually not that run down and shabby. I live on that street. I live down on the end of that street, and right now, we, in the springtime, we have a lot of trouble with icing on that road.
Yes, you do.
And that's becoming, that's coming because that water's got no place to go but past us.
Exactly. I mean, the city undertook a project how many years ago to improve the water, the ditch in the back of that project? At the back of that area to allow more water to drain away.
The water down in the railroad ditch is not the issue. It's getting it down there. That's when it ices up.
Well, Mike.
When we take green space away, we've got no place for water to be absorbed, so it's got to come out of the street and go down.
I think.
Nick, I'll agree with you. Putting the twin home there, I don't have a problem with that. I think it's awesome. Building the garage and the parking, and the driveway and the parking, or driveway in the back to get to the garage and that, it should be green space. That's my opinion, which.
I don't disagree. I'm just saying what is possible at this point in time. And you know, the, what we would desire to what we can actually get, sometimes they're not the same. And you got to make an accommodation at some point, and if you don't want to make the accommodation, that's certainly up to you. But I think we need to make an accommodation here at this point. And we've already, you've, we've already made the other issues. Some of them are not the best choice either. You know, putting that new, that building where it is now with the parking like it was, that wasn't the best choice either. But I think this is one where we're going to have to bite the bullet personally.
I guess, I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I'm failing to get, to wrap my head around the, the parking. You know, it was always a concern with the planning commission from the inception of this project in twenty nineteen about the parking. The parking has not proven to be an issue that I've seen. I've not heard one complaint about it over the years. Now, that it's not known to be a problem, the applicant is wanting to go above and beyond and supply some additional parking for the residents, and now, now the issue is we don't want that. And I'm, we can't have it both ways. I'm, I'm struggling with this.
I agree with you.
Well, and having garages makes the apartments more attractive for the people that can afford to rent the garage at an extra cost. I mean, it's all part of one planned unit development. I, I hear what you're saying, Tim. I, I think the city needs to do some more work on, on how do we redirect water and not put it on this particular property order.
Well, I, I think we can beat this for a long time, but I would like to call the question. Vote.
Okay, we got approval in a second. All in favor saying with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye. Passed with three to two noes. I assume this will go to city council on Monday?
We expect that this one will also go to the city council on, on Monday. I will let you know, Mr. Raxani, if there's any reason why it doesn't. But at this point, I expect it will go for Monday's agenda. This coming Monday. This coming Monday.
Have a motion to close the meeting?
Well, wait a minute. I got a question for John. Uh, this is the second, second, uh, request we've had for variance on height requirements in the past less than a year. Is it time to review that ordinance? If we do indeed have the fire equipment capable of it now, is it time to review that agreement, that ordinance, or do you want to wait till we do the whole comprehensive plan?
When we, when we go through the entire zoning ordinance, we're gonna look at kind of all those aspects. The height a- aspect is not, if it wasn't for the shoreline, it would not be an issue for, for that property. It's only because it's in the shoreline. And it's with, with, within the shoreline, it's not because of firefighting ability. It's, it's to maintain the view shed from the river. That, that, the idea was that the river should be like a, a more of a recreational, uh, natural feature to be kind of preserved and that things within view of it should not be, you know, overwhelming. The, the RM 24 allows for a, a, a building of that size with, with no issue. That's within bounds of the underlying district. What it came down to is that the, the shoreline regulations are here. The RM 24 district that it zoned underneath that is here and they just do not play well together, um, in most cases at all. That's why we had to do that, but we are gonna be looking at the height aspects with, when we overhaul the, the zoning. Right now, um, I'm just, with all the, the pending, um, bills at the legislature that impact zoning or could potentially impact zoning, we're just kind of putting a pin in doing anything right now until we see how that plays out. So we're not getting ahead of ourselves. It may make your jobs considerably easier and probably less fulfilling.
Oh, no.
So.
Looking at unemployment?
Hmm?
Are we looking at unemployment?
No, there'll always be something for you to do.
John, is there any other business?
Uh, that, that actually just ties in. We are, we're continuing to monitor and, and send feedback to our legislators regarding the, the, uh, the local zoning aspects that are under consideration at, at the, at the, uh, legislature in some way or another. Yeah, it is, it's gaining traction. It's moving forward. It's already gotten through, uh, one committee. I believe it's got out of another today and going to another soon, but.
Does tomorrow less override us?
It's gonna override. It, it could potentially override pretty large, large swath. So here's, here in a nutshell is what you could be looking at. Um, I'm just going from memory here, so I might be forgetting something. Duplexes at a minimum in any single-family area that any, any single-family home could be converted to a duplex or built as a duplex. You know, that comes back to tonight's, um, conversation a little bit. All of this is all a little differently. It, allowing for, um, apartment buildings in any commercial district, uh, as well as any multifamily district. So putting apartments literally anywhere that's owned commercial. Um, allowing for, um, homeless shelters in any, any commercial or industrial district. Um, and there's, there's a number of other things I might be missing, might be forgetting just off the top of my head. Oh, oh, ending, ending any sort of parking minimum for any, any project that, that counts. The conversation the lady brought up regarding the parking stalls would be moot.
It could be zero.
Yeah.
They can build whatever they want with no part.
Sorry. It's, it's pretty, pretty wide-reaching and there's, there's more things I think that are coming out. It seems like every day there's a new one tacked on. Ending any sort of rental licensing requirement for any sort of group home or, or, uh, licensed, state licensed facility. Not that that's necessarily a huge one for, for us, but it just takes away that extra layer of, you know, ensuring that we have someone in there taking a look and be sure everything's okay. So, yeah, there's a lot of concerns and we're, it's, um, we're keeping up and sending emails and messages and letters as fast as we can. I know the city administrator testified last week at a hearing and, um, in one of the, one of the committees that, you know, drove down to St. Paul to listen and speak for two minutes.
Had to do with multiple family or multiple change in multiple dwellings or adding multiples in housing. And whether your, your infrastructure capacities can handle it or not, they can build it anyway.
Yeah, the most, most of the cities are, we're, we're in no way in good shape to, if, if there was, we ran some real cursory backly envelope numbers and if even 20% of every home in Mang- or home in, in the city went and said, we're gonna add a, a second unit, our water capacity would be done. We would be used up. That's just the reality and, and, you know, most of the, especially the older neighborhoods, infrastructures and set up to support those, those extra lines and stuff. It's very difficult. So, we'll keep you posted on that as, as things may progress, but.
Is, uh, the city's water supply basically at its limit now?
It, it does have a limit, um, right now until we would look at potentially tapping into another resource. We have a, a few ideas, but they're much longer term. There's no hard, you know, um, we're gonna do X in, in E or Y, but there's a couple ideas on the table, but they'd be along, along, along ways out, long after me, most likely. But there is a, there's a, a finite capacity we have right now, yes, that we could, you know, we could service one massive industrial type development if there was a, one that came and took 100 acres and needed a, a high, high water supply, or we could do X number of houses or some combination. That, that's a, you know, that, that's a reality for us that some cities don't have.
What about, do you know, you maybe don't know, that well that's capped out my direction out along 137? Do you ever need, is that a, is that a test well? Is that a, a potential water well? Is, what is it?
I, I'm not familiar with that one.
It's on my brother's, my brother's property, but.
I don't know how viable that well is.
But I mean, is it, is it tap? I mean, was it drilled as a water well? Or something else?
I, I don't have an answer for you. I, I could certainly ask. Hmm?
Talk about the lift station?
No, that well that's drilled out along my, my nephew Lee, it'd be immediate to his south in that low area. Right along 137, it's about 50 feet off 137. There's a well capped there. But I don't know what purpose it was drilled for.
I do believe that was a test well.
So those are, those are the big ones. We're still, I'm, I'm working to uh, look at options when we, now that we've done with the comprehensive plan, we're, you know, looking towards that zoning update, but I'm not gonna incur any time or cost right now aside from just, you know, I've been making notes on areas that, that come up. Usually when you get over a span of years, when you see the same sort of things come up a couple times here and there, that's a good indicator that maybe you want to give that one some attention and see if it's a time to. Um, so I've, I've got a little, you know, listing of, of those ones I want to make sure we're touching on, but otherwise I'm not, I'm not gonna touch it until the legislative stuff plays out.
Just wondering. Thank you. Now your motions are in order. You wanna quit?
I already made the motion.
Say it.
Oh.
Got a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second it now.
All in favor, saying by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, 7:48.
All right.